Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I join him to see the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
MHS Student Advisory Committee, who's up?
Dr. Riley.
A new student at MHS.
A new grad.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us here. We have some student presentations for you tonight from the members of our advisory committee. So first, I'm going to invite Atul Modur up to the podium. Come on up, Atul.
Hello, everyone. My name is Atul Modur. I hope you all had a great summer. And now I'm the sophomore representative. Today, I would like to present on the accelerated math program in middle school and continuing it into high school. In seventh and eighth grade, around 20 or so students were placed in accelerated math. This is a course that allowed us to take Algebra I in middle school, whereas otherwise completed in freshman year. This class is fast-paced and requires understanding concepts quicker than a regular class. We were also able to get deeper into each unit than the regular math. I loved that class, not only because of the people, but it was my first time being challenged in a class, and I had to really take the extra effort outside of school to learn the material. By the end of the year, the entire class was above the 90th percentile nationally. As we moved on toward high school, we were put into geometry, which is a sophomore class as freshmen. Geometry, in my opinion, was not as tough and a decent amount slower than what we had in middle school. A lot of us averaged 100% or more in most quarters. This theme spread into honors Algebra II and precalculus, where many of the accelerated students found it easy. They also mentioned some units, like unit circles, radians, were cut short and not deeply explored in class. This topic is on tests like the SAT and higher AP classes. This brought some concern to some junior students. It had also been brought up that the change in pace from accelerated back to regular and then back to accelerated is tough on a student since we have to relearn how to perform in accelerated class. Because of this, I wanted to explore the option of continuing the accelerated program like we had in middle school. The pace in middle school was faster than what I'm even taking now, and I want to continue that pace throughout high school. One option that I thought of with other students was about the new AP precalculus class being added this year. Instead of taking Algebra II and precalculus in one year, I thought it would be nice to separate them into Algebra II and precal and go deeper into each subject. We could take Algebra II with geometry freshman year and take AP precalculus sophomore year. AP precalculus is a new course this year, and it has benefits for calculus and other subjects. One important thing to note is that at MHS, we go from precal to calculus AB usually. It also is possible to take calc B, a BC, but it's not as a standalone class. However, we do offer to accelerated students calc BC multi-variable senior year. The only issue with that is that it's not possible for someone to take calc BC in high school unless they took the advanced math program all the way back from seventh grade. I have contacted Ms. Russo, the head of the math department, and was told that standards that were previously taught in standalone precalculus courses have been moved into either Algebra I, geometry, or honors Algebra II. While I do appreciate where she's coming from, I also think it's worth the conversation between teachers and students to find solutions to experience we face. In conclusion, the accelerated math program has been a wonderful part of my academic career. While we have seen some variations in pace and depth in our math courses, it is important for us to keep a challenging and enriching environment. By talking about these other options, we continue on the path of academic mastery. Thank you all, and have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Ms. Hennessy.
Of course. Atul, I love it.
Thank you.
I mean, seriously, I love it. I love that we have the opportunity for the middle school acceleration and your initiative on having the conversation with Ms. Russo about, you know, what could be done, and I'd also say turn around and have a conversation with your principal if you have not already.
Yes.
Because programs of, you know, the program of study and having that impact discussion with you would be really helpful.
Yeah.
Because I think that we're looking for as much rigor that can help to meet our students' needs and continue to challenge you, and your student body is what we are looking for, and I'm sure the staff is looking for as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Yes?
Um, I'd just like to say that I agree with Atul. As someone who went through that accelerated program and wanted to take calculus BC as a standalone class, I ended up having to take it through VHS because there was not enough interest. And I know that there were other students who also wanted to take calculus BC, but once again, not enough interest. So they moved down to AB, which wasn't their first choice, obviously. But I think that combining Algebra II and precalculus, when you're not taking calculus with your school, such as VHS, it doesn't set you up very well for that course because things like the unit circle and radians and just trigonometry in general aren't as deeply, we don't learn that as deeply as we should be. So in that aspect, I think that because my trajectory was to take BC and then score well enough to take a college-level course with a college, but because I took it through VHS and it's not the best way to learn in AP class, I wasn't able to do that. So I think that maybe changing it a little bit would set students up to be able to do that.
Any other questions?
Real quick, Ms. Hennessy, you mentioned for the robotics thing I did last year to bring like the robot down to the thing. And so, yeah, we brought like a fourth of the field down to like the field house during the, what is it, club fair? And we brought like the controller and let people drive it.
Awesome.
So we got some good people signing up. So we have now like a new team, new people learning. So it's nice. Thank you for that.
Atul, thank you. That's exciting to hear that you did that. And, you know, I just, I'm very appreciative of your enthusiasm, whether it be through robotics or the math program.
Yeah.
And how you're approaching things. It's really, it's helpful to hear the feedback from the student body and then be able to take action like you've done. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Atul. Dr. Riley, you took notes, right?
We've had these conversations leading up to this meeting. So with my student leadership council, that's where we generally talk about some of the topics that get presented to you. And Atul, thank you for your leadership, and we will continue to foster those ideas and bring them to life. So, thank you. Yeah, Ms. Hennessy.
Sorry, but I have to ask on that, though, it would be really, I think, really fruitful before getting to the program of studies to really have fleshed this out some more because I feel like I've heard this over the last few years. So I don't want it to be another time. It's kind of kind of, and that's not saying it hasn't, but, you know, I just feel like let's look at what action can be taken because VHS does allow for some of these classes to get accomplished, yet, I mean, just, it obviously is not necessarily meeting the needs of all of our students. So what can we do to try and help and make sure that we're ensuring that the push for the mathematics, you know, especially?
Absolutely.
It would be great.
We've been fortunate, too, as a school, that we can offer so many AP courses in person. And it doesn't always work out that way for every student's schedule, but we do try very hard. And I think what Atul brought up with respect to the addition of AP precalculus could be an interesting part of that pathway as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Catalina Cartez Guzman, who's going to talk to us a little bit about driver's education at MHS.
Good afternoon. My name is Catalina Cartez. I am a junior. And today, I want to talk about a potential driver's education program at the high school. Driver's ed is a crucial part of Marlboro students' lives and their maturing process. It is yet another responsibility that gets added to students' plates and one that completely changes their lives. As students begin driving by themselves, they are able to contribute more to our community, and therefore, I believe that it is very necessary that they are given an opportunity to complete a driver's ed program. As a junior, it is common to hear complaints about how difficult it can be to manage driver's ed and school at the same time. Those that play sports are, find it very hard to fit driver's ed into their schedules due to the odd sports scheduling that they have. And others that don't have the accessibility to be driven to their driving lessons also struggle a lot with getting there and making their appointments on time. It used to be that students could be picked up from MHS and then their instructors would continue their lessons from MHS directly instead of students having to drive to the driving schools. But that is no longer available after COVID. High schools are, high schoolers, students are in danger with the lack of driving education that is available to them. It is a struggle every day to exit the student parking lot at 2:35. And I know that I got my license this weekend, and I will not be leaving the student parking lot at 2:35 because I don't believe that my little car can make it out of there safely with all the irresponsible driving that happens. And I believe that with the driver's ed program offered through the high school, that will hopefully help with that. So it would help with the improvement of their driving skills as well as less issues with overall transportation for students. And that takes me back to the point of last year in March, last school year, when we had the bus strike. I know a lot of my friends, they were told to walk to school, but it was also like mid-winter, very cold outside, and they just weren't able to get a ride to school. And a lot of them were of age to get their driver's license, but they simply weren't able to complete the program in time. So then, by the time the bus strike hit, they weren't able to get a ride at all, and that harmed them from being able to participate in school. And a way in which Marlboro schools could implement a driving program would be, I talked to Mr. Riley about this, to talk to a driving school about mostly, I say, getting instructors to pick students up from the high school. And that could help work around sports scheduling and also people that just don't have a ride to their driving schools. And, sorry, also scholarships offered through MHS through a contract with a driving school for students that aren't able to afford driver's education because I believe that it is very important for students to have in a way to access this form of independence that they aren't able to access without their driver's license. As I said earlier, it would aid our community because it will allow teenagers and high schoolers to be able to participate in a lot of more community events that they simply aren't able to get a ride to. And with their driver's license, I believe there'll be an increase in participation through high schoolers that have the motivation to be there but simply can't be. Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Matthews.
Thank you for that. I know I, prior to this, with Dr. Riley being at the high school and other administration, I was all for getting it in the school. But I have one first question is why is there no pickup post code ed at the high school?
That is also through the driving schools.
Heidi, is your?
That is also through the driving schools that that is set up. So it's the instructors that.
Are they not taking multiple kids? Is that why?
No, they, when I did my driver's ed program with Crystal's Driving School, I would have multiple kids during their observation hours as I drove. And I know that it is available in Westboro High School. I, myself, in the middle of my lessons, would go drop off students at Westboro High School. And I don't know why it isn't available at Marlboro High School, but I know that it is.
I will say this, I mean, through Dr. Riley, obviously, I've spoken to multiple driver's education programs that are in this area, and they are more than willing to set up a satellite in the school. There's some parameters, obviously.
Yeah.
But obviously, it has to go through administration and stuff. But I think it's a wonderful idea to have, to provide more access and accessibility to it. So.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you for approaching that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At Catalina's request, I've started to become more versed now in driver's ed since I took it a long time ago. And it is sort of a regional setup. We have providers that, as Catalina mentioned, are out of Westboro. So I think it's just locking in that company that's going to tailor to our students and be there for our students to pick them up at school. So we're working on that. Thank you. Next up, we have Taylor Cronus, who's going to talk to us a little bit about freshman orientation.
Hello, everyone. My name is Taylor Cronus, and I am one of the freshman representatives for the class of 2027. Today, I would like to share with you a little bit about the freshman experience at Marlboro High School and the freshman orientation process. Walking into freshman orientation, I noticed that there was a very small turnout. There were only about 68 to 65 freshmen out of 168. My initial thought was, how do we get more freshmen to attend orientation? I attended a meeting with Dr. Riley, Ms. Bouvier, Mr. Verdon, and a few others to come up with ideas on how to improve the orientation for the incoming freshmen. One idea that was discussed was that at the eighth grade moving up ceremony, we provide families with an opportunity to sign up for orientation. This is to help ensure that more freshmen attend orientation at the end of the summer. Going into freshman orientation, I expected a more in-depth explanation of the day-to-day of a student at Marlboro High School. But what the orientation was, was more of a repeat tour like the one we received in the fall as eighth graders. During this meeting, I was introduced to the Link Crew Program. This program is used at high schools throughout the country and is meant to make the transition from middle to high school easier for freshmen. One part of the Link Crew Program that sets it apart from how we do orientation now is that the tour isn't just a show around of where everything is, but the tour guides or link leaders share their personal experiences and memories about certain places in the building and, sorry, with the freshmen in their groups. This helps show freshmen that they too can have personal connections with their school and helps them find something they are interested in or a place that they belong. Another thing that surprised me at the orientation was that the teachers were not there, more specifically, the freshman teachers. All throughout kindergarten up until fifth grade, there were open house days where students and their families could come in, meet their teachers, and see their classes. My idea was that we had a night similar to how curriculum night at Wickham is set up, where parents and their students can walk through their schedules and meet their teachers. This will be beneficial to both freshmen and parents because it will soothe parents and students' nerves on their first day of high school. This night will take place separate from the orientation on the Monday before school starts. These are all ways we are looking to improve the freshman orientation for next year. If you have any questions, I am happy to answer them. Other than that, thank you for your time and have a good rest of your evening.
Question. Ms. Hennessy.
My question is a compliment. I love your idea on trying to have the freshmen come on the night before, like on that Monday. I think it's a great idea. I think for a lot of folks that need that extra support, it's a perfect opportunity. And I think with moving away from like the curriculum night, it gives an opportunity to make sure that people are there right up front, especially the freshmen, and a great transition. So I think it's a fabulous idea.
Thank you.
I hope somebody thinks about it and maybe takes execution on it. So.
Yeah, I just, I think especially since we're not doing curriculum night the same way with parents going classroom to classroom, at least the freshman parents would have the opportunity to go and see the building and see where you're having your classes. Sounds like a great idea.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then next, we have Tayla Stimson, who's going to come up and talk a little bit about fall sports. And one of the new systems that we use with the athletics program, it's called Arbiter Live, and it's across a lot of schools throughout the state. Tayla has some recommendations that she's been working with Athletic Director Radzinski on. Come on up.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tayla Stimson, and I am one of the freshman representatives for the class of 2027. I hope all of you are having a good night. I would like to take this time to talk about the missing documentation for fall sports results, more specifically for the junior varsity teams. All of our athletes have been working very hard this season. However, the website that's linked on the Marlboro High School website, Arbiter Live, is missing lots of this information. For example, the girls' junior varsity volleyball teams have had very little of their results posted on the website, but the varsity team has had many of their game results posted. Another example of this is the boys' junior varsity football team, which has had none of their results posted, while the varsity team seems to have most, if not all of them posted. This is because varsity results are required to be posted or submitted from the coaches and teams, whilst JV is not. Since junior varsity scores are not required to be submitted, many teams and coaches do not send them into the athletic department. Additionally, some of the information on Arbiter Live is incorrect. One case of this is the girls' cross-country teams meet against Oakmont Regional. On Arbiter Live, it says the girls' team won 38 to 18, which was not true since the girls' team did not have enough runners to qualify in the first place. This is because the ADs that upload their results onto Arbiter do not know when there are errors from hosting teams. Sometimes, this is fixed from officials that edit the scores, but it has more often gone unnoticed or unfixed. Results are not the only incorrect or missing information on Arbiter. There are also some false scheduling issues on the website, which can cause many, many misleading ideas from both athletes and families. I can offer some firsthand experience on this specific issue since I'm on the girls' cross-country team, and we have had some problems due to these scheduling errors. On Arbiter Live, it says there is a meet scheduled for October 11th in Shrewsbury, but this was not on the official schedule for the team and confused not only the runners and families, but also the coaches and even the athletic director. To make things more complicated, this information was only incorrect on the girls' page, where it was correct on the boys'. It turned out there was no meet scheduled for this day, and the meeting question was put there because it had been scheduled in previous years, although it hadn't been scheduled for this year. Unfortunately, this is the reality of the website. If the information isn't given to the ADs or it's incorrect, it's hard to get or change it without assistance from coaches and athletes. This can put a lot of pressure on coaches and athletes to always have correct information. Arbiter Live is the mandated website that we, as a school, have to use. And since it's linked on the MHS website, I think this issue should be addressed so that athletes and parents/guardians can access results and game or meet information that's correct and up to date. The first step to solving this issue was consulting the athletic directors, Jeff Radzinski and Nicole Fallon, which I did this afternoon. We discussed how we can get the JV teams' results since they often go unsubmitted. The solution we came to was having one representative from each of the junior varsity teams get the results from their coaches and bring them to the athletic office. By doing this, the representative can also bring up any incorrect information that's on Arbiter, so it can be fixed. This will require commitment from both the representative and the coaches, and I believe this will be a great solution. If there are any questions or comments, I will do my best to answer or address them. Otherwise, thank you for your time and have a good night.
Thank you. Questions from the committee?
Oh, I can. So, um, thank you for bringing up this information, but I would definitely say this needs to be corrected. And I'm glad that you had a conversation with the AD and the assistant. But I would also say, I think it really does go back on to those coaches because the JV teams 100% deserve just as much information to be pushed forward as the varsity teams. How does a JV member want to continue to participate if they're not, you know, being thought of in the same way? And I'm sorry, but I really feel like that is on the coaches. That should be part of their jobs. So I appreciate having a representative, and I think that it's great for the athletes to be able to be involved. But from where I'm sitting, my personal view, it's on the coaches. And it's the coach's job to get that information to the AD and the AD to go ahead and make sure that's correct in there. Obviously, there are mistakes that happen. I mean, we're all human. There are errors that occur. But, you know, that needs to get corrected. I guess my question is, is that if we really can't have enough control over Arbiter Live to make sure that the information is correct in there, then it seems like Marlboro has to have some form of hosting on our own to make sure that the team information is correct for schedules because that's not okay either. So I appreciate that you've looked into it. I think that's great. And thank you for your actions on trying to bring it forward. But I really hope that there's going to be some solutions so that any of the parents or the athletes are not put in, you know, a bad position. That's not okay. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I know a few years ago, I brought up the press, you know, in trying to get some press for our sports teams because it seemed to really be lacking. And I think at that point, I think it was the athletic director himself that said, it's up to the coaches to get the information to the different news sources so they would get press. And they'll basically write almost anything we sent to them, but the scores and some highlights are important. So maybe the principal or superintendent can tell the athletic director to tell the coaches, that's part of their job. So I agree with Ms. Hennessy, and I think we've got to do a better job because we don't see a lot of press from our sports teams in the papers. We have very little information in the papers to begin with. So they'll take anything you give them and write a good story as long as you write it for them. So, thank you very much for bringing it to our attention.
And if I could just segue off of what you were saying, the Booster Club, All Sports Booster, they do a lot of good on Facebook on pushing out that information, but there's a huge amount of our community that is not on Facebook.
Facebook, yeah.
So while I appreciate all that's done through that avenue, to the mayor's point, we've got to figure out other ways of making sure that we're highlighting what all of the athletes and all of the people involved in activities, the robotics group, things like that, you know, like we need to go ahead and make sure that that kind of information is getting disseminated. And we can't just put that all on top of, like, say, you know, Jill Warren's back to think that she can always be doing that. So it's going to take a bunch of us, but the coaches would be a really great place that they could push that out. But thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. That concludes our presentations from our students. If you don't mind, I'll dismiss them at this point so that they don't have to hang around for the rest of the meeting.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Excellent job tonight.
Thank you so much.
Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Assistant Superintendent O'Brien will be updating the committee in a few minutes regarding our current McKinney-Vento Special Education and EL enrollment. But committee members have requested an updated overall enrollment report, and I am reporting the overall district enrollment, students attending in district classes tonight, an elementary class size. So I included a chart that has the enrollment as of last Friday. I checked today's enrollment. It's only up by one, so this is pretty accurate. But since I reported just about a month ago, the district enrollment has increased by about 116 students now in the last month. The elementary schools have all increased between 10 and 22 students. So I think two of the schools increased by 10, one by 11, and then Good Now increased by 22 students. They also included the elementary class size charts. I met with three of the elementary principals this morning, and many of the elementary principals have tried to keep or focus their lower enrollments in the primary grades. The first grade in Kane School has been increasing in its height, but every school has about one grade level that is higher than the others. And if you look at the overall, the average class size in each of the buildings, they are pretty close to with one another, ranging between 20 and 21.9. And once again, that is Good Now that has that larger average class size. So, any questions on that? We are looking at it. We are talking about it. But as we all know, we really don't have the capacity to add any additional classrooms anywhere. So we'll be doing a little tweaks here and there as we're already starting, and someone laughed today, that we are already having a conversation about how many sections for each grade level for next fall. Because when you have larger groups going up, at what point do you hold them? Is 24 reasonable in order to keep a lower grade level? Is twenty-four reasonable in order to keep, uh, lower grade level, um, reasonable? But if you look, our kindergarten enrollment is currently at four hundred and twenty-three. So, once again, we are maintaining that solid, well over four hundred students per grade level at elementary, and those are the numbers that will be coming up. They usually increase from K to one as well. And I don't think there's, is there, are there any questions now?
Nothing we can do. I guess my only question is, do we have enough para-support where it's needed? And I know we're low on, we still have
We still have openings. We still have not fully staffed. We do believe that we will shortly be coming asking for another E.L. para to be added at Kane School to support the needs of the students there. But we have a number of unfilled E.L. para-professional positions across the district, and we would be potentially coming and asking for more support staff once we're fully staffed. And we keep on saying that. We know, um, the teachers have been very clear, saying it would be much more easier to handle even higher class size, as long as they had additional support in their classrooms. Yes?
Senator.
Thank you. So, question, because I mean, I know we've had issues before from like a human resources standpoint of trying to get people. Are we then trying to target, um, you know, going to specific locations for reach-outs to try and encourage, um, getting people? I mean, I'm assuming that, but I really don't want to assume. I'm going to ask the question.
So, um, once again, Patty Brown and her team have been attending a number of community and school events, trying to recruit. Last year, there was success with the postcard, um, that were sent out. So, we don't want to overdo it, but she is preparing to do that again. So, we, things that we were successful with in the past, she will continue as always. She is reaching out and posting, um, in the conventional, um, places, but also reaching out to colleges.
Yeah.
Yes, she is doing all of that, as well as, um, we love working with the colleges because that's a pathway towards future teachers as well.
Yeah, I guess that was where my head was, if there was a way of, um, just like we try to partner from an educational standpoint with, you know, Quinnipiac, or not Quinnipiac, QuinSig or something like that. It would be great if we could try and recreate some of those relationships where we would then be the place that the student teachers then could come here, right? So we're vice versa, trying to do that. And that's great to hear if that is something that's being executed. So, thank you.
We used to have the food truck festival.
Yes.
Some of the city events, she's been at several.
Every event, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. I have also included a draft of my goals to my report for your review and comments. At the next scheduled meeting, I will ask you to accept my goals. If there are any edits, additions, questions, or changes, please contact me before, prior to that meeting so I can send out a revision as necessary. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. O'Brien?
Thank you very much. For tonight, Marlboro Public Schools is in the process of submitting our October one student data report to DESI. And included in my report, I have an overview of some of the data highlights in comparison to student data from October one data for the last four years. I'm not going to go through each of the grids, but skipping to, um, my narrative on some of the highlights. So the number of students reported as homeless at the start of the school year is nearly four times the number from last October, with expectations that this number will continue to increase as additional families are placed in designated shelters. So not counting the students from these designated shelters, which currently is sixty-two, the number of students already enrolled in Marlboro who have become homeless has doubled. So if you take away the sixty-two, we have eighty students who are designated as homeless, which is still is double thirty-eight students that we had prior to having any designated shelters in the city. So homeless students, students who have lost housing has been a significant area of concern regardless of having the shelters, uh, within the district.
Can I just ask a question for clarity through the mayor? Those students were previously Marlboro students, all of them, who have lost housing? They're not?
Either, so there is a combination of students who have been enrolled and have lost housing, or students who have come and doubled up with families. I can look to see what the breakdown is and get that number for you. I'd look at the enrollment date and then look to see if it's a doubled up versus, like, what their previous address was.
Okay. Thank you.
So our wraparound service staff is currently supporting a hundred and fifteen homeless families with students in our schools. Given the significant volume of McKinney-Vento families that they have needed to support, there's been very little time to provide supports and services to other students and families that have been referred. A proposal for additional staffing in this area will be presented to the committee, uh, at a future meeting. And my thought of what I'll potentially be recommending is taking some of the funding that we'll be receiving for students that are in the shelters to be able to use for either a wraparound case manager, someone that is going to be specifically working to support those families to take those caseloads off of our three current wraparounds so that they can work towards, um, increasing the number of families that are not McKinney-Vento to support. The school district and the city of Marlboro receives ongoing communications from multiple sources about new families that are reported to be placed at one of the three hotels that have been designated as shelters. Information that the city receives has conflicted with information the district is receiving, and there hasn't been a single time when initial information that has been provided to either that has been accurate. Most often, the number of school-aged children that need to be enrolled has been lower than information that we received from the state. An example of this is an email that we received from the state on Wednesday indicating that there are nine additional families placed at the Best Western and approximately sixteen school-aged children that needed to be enrolled. And we had come to find out that there are only five additional school-aged children that were newly placed and that we couldn't get verification of the numbers of the families. There's also been times when school-aged children have already been enrolled in other districts and are being, um, transportation is being arranged so that they can go back to those schools. Initial information that we receive needs to be regarded with caution until its accuracy can be verified. I just need to stress that enough because some of the information that we get is really, really been disproportionate to what the accurate numbers are. There's been a four-point-seven percent increase in the number of multilanguage students enrolled compared to last October's reporting. And overall, there's been some of an increase, but not like the increases that we saw between twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, where we saw like those significant jumps. Most of these, most of this increase can be attributed to students who have been placed in one of the three designated state shelters in the city. Funds received from the state's supplemental budget in FY twenty-three is funding a classroom teacher and an E.L. teacher at Kane to accommodate increased enrollment in that school. There may be additional E.L. teachers and para-educators proposed to be funded by the FY twenty-four supplemental funding as we continue to examine services and potentially enroll more students. So that supplemental funding that we had talked about in previous meetings, so the district will be receiving a hundred and four dollars a day per student that is enrolled in those shelters. And that money is set aside for the district, but specifically to help support this increase in unexpected enrollment with those students. That's the primary focus, and a lot of school districts are looking at staffing to help with class sizes and those additional needs. A lot of the districts, um, they are E.L. students. So, E.L. supports are also a primary target. Special education out-of-district placements overall have been very, very consistent for the last several years. However, I did want to point out, um, the district did have five students in out-of-district placements enrolled during the summer that we need to include in the next fiscal budget. The districts that they're coming from are fiscally responsible for this school year. So those students are included in the count that I have here, but budget-wise, they're not included in our current budget. We will add them, those out-of-district tuitions to next year's budget, but they are represented in the data that I have here. Any questions?
So they're, none of them residential. They're out-of-district, but not residential?
Correct. We currently have no residential students at this time.
Senator.
Sorry, and just to make sure I understand, right now, their previous district is covering those costs, correct?
So there's a move-in law. So, um, and it's only for private, um, private day and private residential tuitions, where if a family has moved after April first, that the district, the other district is responsible for the entire fiscal year, that does not apply to collaborative placements. So if a student is placed at a collaborative placement and moves into a district, that district assumes that collaborative tuition as of the date of the move.
Right, but currently those five, that money is coming from, covering. Will we get notification when the upcharges come before budgets? Do you know? Because you know how, like, sometimes they have that timing, which hits.
We had just received, um, notification that the anticipated tuition increases are four-point-six-seven percent for next year, so not fourteen, but definitely not under three percent that they had been for at least, you know, the last ten years. So we do have that increased amount. We do have the placements where those students are, what the anticipated tuition would be for next year. So that will all be factored into our budget proposals.
And none of those five are aging out or something?
No. But we, you know, again, we've had a decrease in our circuit breaker reimbursement because we've had decreases in the number of students who've been out-placed. I think when I first started, we were maybe seventy-something as far as out-of-district placements, and a significant number of those, um, there was a significant number of residential, which are much more expensive than day placements. So, as a district, we had benefited from some significant reimbursements. So as we factor those in to the next school year down the line, we will get reimbursements for those. And now, Tom, how many years have we been doing transportation reimbursement? That's been fairly new, I think, three, three years or so. So that's an additional, um, revenue that we've been able to capture the last several years that we didn't in the past as well.
Do we have enough transportation? Do we have enough buses for those students? That's a different.
We don't have enough transportation, but we have.
No, 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 no. I mean, I know that the special education, the vendors from the special education students is different from N.R.G.
So, as of Friday, we only had one student left on the waiting list for special education transportation. And McKinney-Vo... Foster and McKinney-Vento that are traveling to other districts, that's just ongoing as we get them. They may be on a waiting list for a little bit, but right now, those numbers are fairly low, fortunately.
On that transportation, are they piggybacking? Have they gotten better about picking kids up in different districts to bring them to the same district or other stops?
Yes, as far as collaborating for routes, absolutely.
I know there was a lot of resistance initially, and then, obviously, you only have so many drivers.
So, uh, so
Now we do.
I didn't know if I need to go into, so Aspen Valley Collaborative is who we have for the van pools. So, we've had to outsource, uh, we had found cabs, cabs for kids, not cars for kids. Cabs for Kids has picked up a significant, um, number of routes that have been able to transport our students, but other districts who have students going to the same placements, we've been able to collaborate on those.
Good. Glad to hear it.
Collaboratives are our friends.
I guess the communication, I don't know if it can improve or not. It's nice that they're calling the city, calling us, obviously, as you said, until they're actually placed and we register them, it's just throwing darts at a wall until, you know. I know that you're probably happy that the feds are starting to get involved, but who are they going to talk to? There's nobody's running this program. This is just, you know, let's, again. I don't have any answer for it. I'm as frustrated as you are.
Okay. I've been quiet.
Go ahead, go.
Obviously, it's a huge issue, and as Ms. O'Brien said, every time we get numbers, we get them from Boston, we get them from the hotels, we get them from the Elliott Group and Smart, and they're all different. Right now, the update I have from the state is a hundred and forty-two families between the three hotels. Because now they've bled into a third hotel, and that's only because the governor's office decided to use Expedia to book some of these people. They're not going through housing. So, they're bleeding into a third hotel, and I've been working with the lieutenant governor and the secretary to try to get them into the holiday and to keep it all together. So we have better resources there. They have a social service organization, and they can use the National Guard that are down there somewhere else. We haven't been successful yet, but they're telling me they're working on it. So a hundred and forty-two families, four hundred and fifty-three individuals between the three hotels. So that's a one percent increase in our population overnight, when we have a housing crisis. Of that, I'm given the number of ninety-one school-aged kids. So where the hell these kids are, I can't tell you. The state can't tell you, the hotel can't tell you, and the social service organizations can't tell you. But what we received is ninety-one school-aged kids. I know the funding is going to come. I'm not worried about the funding. I'm sorry, but that's the least part of this whole thing. We'll have the money to pay for it. Eventually, we'll get reimbursed for a chunk. We're getting a hundred and four dollars a day per student. And even that's sketchy as to which students, but, and when they start. But again, I'm less concerned about that. The work program and trying to get some of these individuals to work, great. The governor's come up with what she believes is going to work. I hope it does. I think it's undermining our tax system, which some will really enjoy, but I don't see how the D.O.R. or the IRS is going to go along with this program. I've had it explained to me, and I still don't understand it. I've just been doing this for thirty-five years, but I don't get it. So I guess I would just say, the state legislators haven't acted on this right-to-shelter, and that is a big issue because right-to-shelter was never put in place for what we're doing today. It was put in place for now, the one or two families or individuals a week that show up in my office looking for housing. Because they hear that Marlboro has shelters, so they want to be part of the program, so they show up. I don't doubt for one minute they have nowhere to go, but we don't have a program. And there is no program we don't have a program. And there is no program for individuals, for the most part. If you're a family, you can hopefully get into the Smart program. But they show up now weekly, where we used to have one every four or five months, and we try to take care of them through Smart or one of the agencies we work with. Now, it's all the time. And again, it's individuals and it's families. This isn't getting better. I had the opportunity to be with the governor about a week and a half ago at a forum, and I basically told her the same thing, point blank. The money's great, the work program's great, but someone's got to shut off the faucet. And even she said, and she's said she's just about at the end of what we can absorb in Massachusetts. They're just taking, there are up to 90 communities now that this is going on in. I was at a forum today in Boston, and some of the town administrators really don't see the big deal, because it's not affecting them. So, until it affects 351 communities, we're not going to get a loud enough voice to affect the legislature. And as far as Washington goes, they have many more problems, and they really don't have this on their radar to get anything done. They talk a good game, but they won't get in a room and come out with a solution. So, I guess my analogy is, we have a lifeboat that holds six people, and we can squeeze eight and maybe even 10 into it. But if we try to put 20 in it, we're all going to sink. And we have a lifeboat that has some issues that we have to deal with. And as we know, we have a space problem. In the state, we have a housing problem. Out west, the schools, you know, the people I were talking with today said, "Send the kids out our way." And I said, "Be glad to send them out your way." They have school buildings with no kids in them. So, someone better come up with a solution. But what we've seen from our leadership in Massachusetts and the legislature, they have enacted, they want to talk about what additional resources they can give us. This is not changing. From what I gave you a few weeks ago, it's only getting much, much higher. The Holiday Inn has already booked their rooms through 2024. My understanding is they took their reservation system offline, because they have 170 rooms booked. What that means is-
It's going to happen.
So.
So, can I ask you a question that you-
I probably won't have an answer.
I hear you, but you just said something. We're getting ready to go to a state conference, where we're going to be with other school committee members from the western part of the state. So, you mentioned that there was some kind of comment about send them out here. Can we hear a little bit about, and not like this specific, but like any kind of insight about that? Because we can try and have some conversations, because I think if, you know, if other people aren't coming up with ideas, maybe there is a way that we can help by making suggestions of school districts that have the ability and the space, and can, you know, these folks be moved from Marlboro or other towns?
But do they have the hotel capacity?
They don't have housing resources for them.
But I understand. I'm just saying, you know, like, maybe there's a way to at least start the conversation of, is there anywhere else to kind of move some folks out? I don't know.
Obviously, I know the secretary, every time I talk to him, and I talk to him weekly, is very frustrated. He's got a job to do, and he's got to find these people places to live. But the answer isn't put another Band-Aid on. The answer is, you got to shut the spigot off, and then open it up again with a process. This is not a process. And eventually, Washington will wake up, and like I said, the governor basically, she hasn't thrown her hands up yet, but she's getting close. I was surprised to hear that she believes we're getting to a tipping point. So, it was in a closed room, and maybe this one isn't, but that was a week and a half ago, and since then, we've taken many, many more. We get a call regularly, there's four more families, there's five more families, two more families, you know, and the numbers never match up, never even close. So, I don't know if that means the state's paying for a lot more rooms that have people in them, which is a possibility. And we have a lot of great organizations in the city that continue to call and say, "What can we do to help? Where can we donate?" It's like, donate? There's nothing the people staying through these programs need. They're getting three meals a day, plus vouchers for other stuff. They're getting clothing, they're getting laundry service. They're getting everything, medical costs. So, the group we have is well taken care of. There are some out there that not so much. And I know we're going to get to that point, but we're not there now. Any other good questions?
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And good news, that may help out with some of the issues you're dealing with, we did finally, I had asked for funding for a social worker. That person just started this week. Through, we got them through the United Way. So, thanks, Paul Minor, again, for helping us out, but we have them part-time right now, but we're working on more than that. So, if you need that, call my office.
Excellent.
Who am I up to?
You're up to minutes.
I'm up to the minutes of September 26th.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Pose. Carries. Public-
Comment.
Public comment. Any public comment? Any public participation? Anything else? Actually, I have New England Innovation Academy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The New England Innovation Academy is seeking to receive a letter of final approval, so that they are recognized by the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Actually, I think that they are looking to receive a vote from the committee-
Yep.
-that you are awarding final approval, because the earlier vote was contingent on the occupancy permit, which they have included. So, they want the final vote of approval on the record.
Motion to approve the request by Innovation, excuse me, New England Innovation Academy, or is it their accreditation?
To grant final approval.
Or private school in Marlboro.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion?
Do we-
Spoken out, John.
Do we know how many students they have? Anybody? Anyone? Anyone? Okay.
I know they're growing, they're starting slow and building on it. Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Pose. Carries. Thank you very much.
Can, not on the vote. I just have, and this superintendent and the mayor. We have other schools operating in Marlboro that have never come before us.
Yep.
And they're supposed to.
The states are not supposed to allow them to operate until they do.
I believe currently, they are not, they are requesting homeschool plans from their students, and are only officially offering an after-school program, is what is being shared.
Okay. We'll have a conversation offline, because I, okay.
Whatever we need to do.
Is there more than one? Or is just the one?
I think just the one. There's a second that I'm not sure if it enters into kindergarten or first grade, but.
Through the chair, though. One of the things, though, with the approvals of some of the different schools, like, we're supposed to be sharing and gathering insight and information.
That's only charters.
That's what I was just going to say, is that that's one of the things with AMSA that we are supposed to be working together to get insight about things that have been beneficial.
Let it go. Never happening.
Are you holding your breath?
Hasn't happened yet.
Haven't been holding.
Never going to happen.
Okay. Well, I'm just, you know.
You can keep fighting the good fight, sweetheart, but-
I will. Don't worry.
It's never going to happen.
I will. That's what.
Are you sure you don't want to stay on Wednesday night?
No, if I said that, if I said that, I'd have charges brought against me.
I shouldn't have said, sweetheart. That was inappropriate. I apologize. I apologize. I just, it's so frustrating.
Good thing it was Ms. Hennessy.
No, I apologize. That was inappropriate.
Of course, Michelle. I'll keep asking questions. That's my job.
I know. I know.
Any other question? We took that vote.
We did.
Donations and gifts. Marie Asta Houts on an MPS $250.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. All those in favor? Pose. Carries. United Brethren of Freemasons, Richard School Connections Program, $300.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. All those in favor? Pose. Carries. O'Connor Studios, Richard School, $1,135.98.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. All those in favor? Pose. Carries. Reports of subcommittees. Any reports of subcommittees? Seeing none. Members' forum. This is Matthews.
I have reviewed and signed the warrant.
Thank you. Any other members? Seeing none.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Pose. Carries. Thank you very much.